Good evening, I am Maria Moller, President of the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County. And on behalf of the League, I'd like to welcome you to the City of Carver Candidate Forum. We thank all the candidates and the audience for attending tonight and our online audience for viewing. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose a political party or a candidate for office. League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County has a longstanding history in our community of providing unbiased candidate and issue information that is widely used by Minnesota voters regardless of their political beliefs. Sponsorship of this forum is a public service providing you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss important issues face to face. The views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the League of any particular candidate. And there is never enough time to cover all the issues. If you feel that your question was not addressed tonight, please feel free to contact the candidate directly after the forum. And now I'd like to introduce our moderator, Diana Casper. Diana is a certified moderator from the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County.
Thank you. We will start the candidate forum with the opening statements. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes for their opening statement and one and a half minutes for a closing statement. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order by office, beginning with the candidates for Mayor, Courtney Johnson, and Kristi Mock. Then we will hear for the candidates for City Council, Glenn Henry, Lori Sayer, and Ryan Schultz. The order of answering questions and the closing statements will be rotated based on a randomly generated grid. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to the questions. Please note our timekeepers, here, who have a 30-second and then a 15-second sign. They also have a stop sign or will call time to be sure each candidate has the full one and a half minutes. The first question has been prepared by the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County. Additional questions will be those submitted by the audience here and those submitted to the League's email address by the public, candidates and/or the candidates' campaign. Let's begin with the opening statements. Courtney Johnson.
Good evening, my name is Courtney Johnson and I'm running because I have a sincere interest in serving the City of Carver, its residents, business owners, and others. Ever since moving to Carver eight years ago, I've been involved. In my current role on the Carver City Council, which I've been in for the past 22 months, I've served as the City Council Liaison to the Carver Business Council, the Fire Board, and the Planning Commission. I've represented Carver at events at Chesapeake Middle School West, ground breakings, and a visit to Granite Falls to learn more about the process involved in certifying their levy. I participated in walkthroughs for street improvement projects, the fire department's training for council members, and resident advocate meetings. Before becoming a member of the City Council, I was a Commissioner on the Planning Commissioner, a volunteer for the Steamboat Days Committee, and a board member for the Carver Park and Rec Board, which is now known as the Parks Commission. My professional background includes 17-plus years of working in communications roles, including journalism, media relations, public relations, external and internal communications. I'm currently a social responsibility, Senior Program Manager at United Healthcare, a role which I'm fortunate to be able to work from home, and it allows me the flexibility to be very involved in my current role as a member of the Carver City Council. I'm running for mayor because I have the experience, the dedication, and I know I'm the best person to serve Carver for the next four years. I'm committed to our community and dedicated to its progress.
Kristi Mock.
Hi, my name is Kristi Mock and I'm running for Carver Mayor. I have been ingrained in the Carver community for the last 15 years. I've also been with local government for almost 20, so I have a lot of background when it comes to municipalities and local government and small communities. I have, excuse me, I am the Council Liaison to the Township Fire Board. I'm also for the Heritage Preservation Commission and the Carver County Leaders Group. I'm currently the President of the Carver Lions Club and also a Carver Steamboat Days volunteer. If you've seen any of my campaign literature, it says because it is about "we." I do truly believe that a community is about "we" and it's not about one single person. And working together through that "we" mode, we can make the best community and work for the best outcomes for all of us. Thank you.
Glenn Henry.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League for putting on this event again. It's always a pleasure coming before you. And of course, the citizens of Carver. My name is Glenn Henry. I live in Sixth Street and I'm running for office for council. It'll be my third term if I succeed. I've been on numerous commissions, the heritage preservation, the parks. I've seen Carver come a long way. I grew up in Carver. My family moved here in '73, and since then, with a population of about 350 people, we're almost at 5,000 now, so Carver has grown immensely. As far as what I'd like to see, I'd like to see some burgeoning industrial come to town. But that's all based upon the rooftops that we are building. We currently have over 600 platted and a lot more to come. So I'm running for office to continue the work that we've done the past eight years, and thank you.
Lori Sayer.
Hi, my name is Lori Sayer, and I've been a Carver resident for over 15 years. And each year I've gotten a little more involved and just become a more engaged citizen. And I'm realizing that my first city council meeting was in the old city hall, so I kind of feel proud of that because I don't think a lot of people can say that, oh, I was in the basement of the old city hall. And what brought me to my first meeting and started to get me engaged was it happened to be the property that my husband and I built our home on just had really bad stormwater drainage because of lack of good infrastructure. So that's something that's just always stuck with me, and now I see how I can help shape the future of Carver. And one of the things that I've had exposure to and just been more engaged is serving on one of the commissions. And so specifically, about the last two years, I've been on the Planning Commission. So I'm really excited to see what's potential and what different directions we have the opportunity to go in, and look forward to being a part of shaping that. I have a sincere passion for this residence and also doing what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Schultz.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Schultz. I'm 22-years-old. I've been living in Carver for the past 18 years. I served four years in the United States Military, the Navy, and then I just got back. And I'm quite interested in politics and how the thing, how things work, the inner workings of a lot of things, the back doors and all that other stuff that I've seen during my time in the military. And now I just want to see, you know what? Let's see how it works, and let's see if I can improve upon what they did, what I learned from that. My main intention of running is mainly to serve the people of Carver, to do my best job, and hopefully all goes well.
Thank you. And now our first question, and Ryan, you'll be first to answer. What are your top two priorities for the City of Carver over the next two years?
Top two? Okay. Well, first one is to mainly get more people to come to Carver. We've been building a whole bunch of homes in Carver. We have two projects that are currently going on right now. We have the Meadows Project, and we also have the Oak Project. And they're both building a whole bunch of homes for people of Carver and get more people, more revenue for the actual county. Second topic that goes into that is getting more industry and more jobs for everyone that come in, so we can keep Carver self-sustainability and all that other fun stuff.
Glenn Henry.
The top two priorities that I'm looking forward to taking on is currently infrastructure. I don't know if anybody's aware, but apparently we have some water issues in town that we are getting to the bottom of. After talking with some of the residents and talking with the city staff, we're going to be looking at what could be the causes of the brown water. The other thing that will be coming down the pike soon will be a new water treatment facility with as many residents that will be coming here. Time will tell, that'll be soon coming down the pike. Another thing that's going to be, that we've been currently working on for years, is the insurance program for FEMA for the people that live, for the certified levy. That is, it's very important to the people downtown for the simple fact that their insurance rates, nobody wants to pay. So through some hard work and communication with, with the current engineers, hopefully we can get some type of resolution for the downtown people soon.
Okay. Courtney Johnson.
So having been on the Carver City Council for the past 22 months, it's really hard to boil it down to two priorities, but I would say for me, number one is smart development. Carver's growth is inevitable. What we can affect, however, is making sure that we have the right development by sticking to our comprehensive plan in the right areas. There will be additional rooftops, we know that. We can anticipate additional commercial and industrial, making sure that that's in the right spot, have access to the infrastructure needs that they want, and also making sure that our city's infrastructure grows as the community grows. I think the second priority that I have would be our historic downtown. There are a couple of hurdles that folks who either live or operate a business in the historic downtown are currently facing. Number one is what Glenn was talking about with our levy. Because it's not certified, the folks who own property down here have to pay exorbitant flood insurance premiums. So we have some pretty exciting opportunities to move forward with that and to try to get the levy certified. Those are my top two.
Okay, thank you. Kristi Mock.
Thank you. Well, being on City Council, we deal with a lot of different issues every day, so it is really hard to pick two, to say that those are my top two priorities. I do have to say that along with my fellow council members here, that the historic downtown, I live in the historic downtown, we chose to buy a home down here, and we've been renovating it since December to bring it back to its original glory. And it's been quite a job, but we do play, excuse me, pay flood insurance, so I definitely understand the needs of working on a certified levy. We have been working with an engineering firm that we think will be able to help us get that in front of the legislature and hopefully get some of the funding we need to get the levy certified, so that we can have a vital, historic, vibrant downtown. Infrastructure and sensible commercial growth is another one. We do have a lot of new homes going in. I think most of us have been on County Road 11 at the two-peak times of the day and attempted to go through the stop signs and, or excuse me, stoplights and through that traffic. I think something does need to be done to improve that as we move forward with additional homes going in that area. We are working with Carver County right now on a feasibility study on what that could look like. I see that my time is almost done. Thank you.
Lori Sayer.
For myself, the top two priorities, if I have the opportunity and privilege to serve on the City Council, would be how, broadly speaking, budget, but more how the budget affects us as residents, not just the property taxes at the county, at the city level, but also our water bill, those who own properties in the flood district, you know, working towards getting that levy approved so that their insurance rates. So just, one of the priorities would be budget, but to be sensible and look at how it affects the residents and how it hits them when it comes to those things with their city portion of the property taxes, the water bills, possible different insurance rates, and then even just fees, you know, if somebody wants to put on a deck, are we in alignment with other cities? So that's the first priority. The second one, another really broad one, is the infrastructure with really a focus on roads. Part of my campaign platform is that we'd have the right-sized roads in the right places. And some of that will come with improvements to Jonathan Carver Parkway, but I really see that we would need to align with county resources and partner with getting the right-sized roads in the right places.
Thank you. And Lori, you'll be first to answer the next question, which is, "A lack of affordable housing options is one of the top reasons for homelessness for individuals and families. What can the City of Carver do to help end homelessness in the community?"
Regarding the lack of affordable homes and the leading to homelessness, I really think that it's more than just the affordability, and we can't ignore mental health issues that sometime is part of the issue for homelessness. So I think being really open and willing to look at trends that we're seeing and what are been successes that other cities and communities have had with addressing, you know, what can become potential homeless and how to offer services.
Thank you. Ryan.
Hello again. So for affordable homes, I know that the homes that we are building up near 212, affordable for those buildings are around like $350,000, which for me, as a 22-year-old, will never be able to afford by myself, even if I had a partner, which I don't. So the way that we could go forward is for apartments. I know we have an apartment complex over, near the Public Works Center and for the school. We do have, I've been talking with some people, and we do have extra room to expand if they wanted to, as well as we could probably, in the residential areas, build more apartments for about $900 or some such, which would be a lot more affordable than a $1,500-a-month house. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Kristi.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Sure. "A lack of affordable housing options is one of the top reasons for homelessness for individuals and families. What can the City of Carver do to help end homelessness in the community?"
I'm not sure that we can ever end homelessness, but I think we should do a better job of trying to find out the factors that cause it, whether, as Lori stated, is mental illness or it is lack of jobs, lack of transportation. I think there can be many factors that, that can cause that. We do have an affordable housing building here. I do know that there is a waiting list to get in there, so I think that there is definitely a need, not just in Carver, but in Carver County as a whole. Outside of that, I have been talking with, excuse me, when we have our meetings and we're looking at new developments, I often state to our council and to our city staff that we need to look at somehow incentivizing moderately-priced housing for lifecycle housing, and by that I mean not just for people who have retired and maybe moved on to, to a later spot in life, but even those who are young, coming out of college, young families. Some of the housing that we have going in right now is not affordable to that group. And I think it is very sad to me that people who have either lived their entire life in Carver cannot afford to live here as they get to an older age, or that they have come back from college and there is no place for them to live because they can't afford on a new family or a single budget. I think we have some work to do in that area. I don't have all the answers for that, but I think it is something that we can definitely do a little bit better at and start working on some of those issues. Thank you.
Courtney.
Thank you. So in my role as in social responsibility for United Healthcare, this is homelessness is one of the areas that we have to work in that space a little bit, so I'm glad this question came up because even in Carver, we're not immune to this issue. The issue of affordable housing in Carver is definitely an issue. At this point, we are not necessarily a cradle-to-grave, if you will, community as far as housing. There are a couple of units, and literally, it's a couple of units for formerly homeless individuals at Carver Crossings. We are working with the Trident Development, which is the senior housing, which will potentially be in the location of the bus garage off of Sixth Street, where there will potentially, based on the financing and the TIF that they're looking for from the city, have some units for lower-income individuals. I think downtown is where you will find the highest concentration of affordable housing units, but because of our issues with not having that levy certified, it is a barrier to folks for home ownership in the downtown area. So that's another way that that levy is so important that we figure out a fix for that. Lots of options, one really serious, serious problem, and I, it would be something that I would focus on as mayor.
Glenn.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. "A lack of affordable housing options is one of the top reasons for homelessness for individuals and families. What can the City of Carver do to help end homelessness in the community?"
Well, seeing as our family moved here in '73, I can't say I was born in Carver, but there's been the, the design by some people that if you should be able to be born in Carver, raised in Carver, work in Carver, retire in Carver. And that's, we're looking for a lifecycle kind of, of living. The affordability of it, as far as all the reality of the matter is, downtown is probably as affordable as there's going to be in Carver, other than in Carver Crossings. We could market to developers that could come in and see the feasibility of putting apartments in Carver, but that comes along with industry as well. Living in Carver and, and the affordability of it, not only do we have a very limited supply of low-income housing, we have a very limited supply of wealthy housing as well, wealthy being over a million-dollar properties. So there's a lot of work to do to be able to, to have the whole cycle of all people living in Carver.
Okay. Thank you. And Glenn, you'll be first to answer the next question. What are your thoughts about the Metropolitan Council and what relationship it should have with Carver?
My thoughts on the Metropolitan Council are mixed. We've had a great relationship with them the last few years, and in working with them, with Carver Crossings, working with them with the, the bus station, and the current, the current, what's the word? The current mobility of 212. The Met Council is, we need to use them because the reality of the matter is they're not going anywhere. We need to use them to our advantage and be a partner with them in some of the, in some of the busing and, and growth that's coming this way.
Courtney.
So with, as an elected official, I have folks who hold my feet to the fire. With the Met Council not being elected folks, I have a little bit of an issue with that. That said, we've got a good relationship with the Met Council. We are currently in the middle of our comprehensive, our design Carver Comprehensive Planning process, and that is a process where we are envisioning what Carver is going to look like in 2020. That is all being done because that is a requirement of the Metropolitan Council. That being said, our city planner, Erin Smith, will tell you that that is a really good exercise, and it's something that she would have us do once every 10 years regardless of the requirement from the Met Council. So requirements like that are very forward-looking and are a really good exercise to keep us looking forward to having a plan and to knowing which direction we're going.
Lori.
My thoughts on the Metropolitan Council is it's definitely a partnership that we need. We're going to need their help and their resources as we continue to grow. Having been appointed as a Commissioner on the Planning Commission, I've gotten a lot more education on the Metropolitan Council, specifically with the Comprehensive Plan that Ms. Johnson was referring to, and that they're planning for 2040. So I go home and tell my kids about this, and they're like, "Mom, you'll be old enough, you can live in the senior apartments that are going to go behind our house." So yeah, so I'm, yeah, I'm very engaged in it. But it's, it's a great exercise, the Comprehensive Plan. It's been a great education for me that I feel like has helped prepare me to serve the city as a future council member.
Ryan.
So for the Comprehensive Plan, if you really want to know, I think it's definitely useful for what we need to look into the future, sort of like a building block, and also partnership with the people that help, want to help raise the community up is also commendable, and we need to have further communications along the line with them. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay. Kristi.
My views with the Met Council are also a bit mixed. I think there's a little bit of an equity of power when it comes to the Met Council as to our smaller communities out here and as we get to the outer edge suburbs. I know that occasionally we have to have them redo some of their numbers when it comes to feasibility studies. County Road 11, I know that some of the numbers that they came back with for traffic counts and for different things that we were working on for the County Road 11 study, that things had to be redone. I do feel that we have, we have work to do with them, obviously with the Comprehensive Plan. 2040 is very exciting, looking that far forward and trying to do that envisioning. I think that with the Met Council, we, if we, I think if we work really hard with them, we can come to the best outcomes. And, but we'll take that work and it will take being in their ear and working very hard on the checks and balances with them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kristi, you'll be first to answer the next question, which is, "Statistics show that Carver is currently a bedroom community. Residents primarily leave all day for jobs in other areas. Do you feel it is important to bring more employers to Carver? If so, how would you bring businesses to Carver?"
Could you repeat that entire question one more time, please?
Sure. "Statistics show that Carver is currently a bedroom community. Residents primarily leave all day for jobs in other areas. Do you feel it is important to bring more employers to Carver? If so, how would you bring businesses to Carver?"
Of course, I think it is important to bring additional business to Carver. We are a bedroom community, which is a very wonderful thing to have. We have a very close-knit, tight community. People feel safe here, but we have an opportunity for growth. We are looking at industry up by Fleet Farm right now, and we are in discussions with a business up there. I think that by offering different incentives, we can, we can attract more business and including setting up TIF districts, which is some delayed taxation, but they eventually become on the tax rolls and start bringing down the tax burden for the residents. Of course, that's what comes first, the chicken or the egg with that, but if we don't have the industry at all, then we don't, we will never get the taxes from them. It would also be very nice that people could leave their house in the morning and drive to their job in Carver, and I think it would just make us stronger as a whole to have that base, not only for taxes, but for services being offered and for a closer family life and a shorter commute for, for our residents here. Thank you.
Lori.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. "Statistics show that Carver is currently a bedroom community. Residents primarily leave all day for jobs in other areas. Do you feel it is important to bring more employers to Carver? If so..." If so, how would you bring businesses to Carver?"
Certainly, yes, I think it's important to bring more employers to Carver, and I don't think there's just a one answer to how to do it. Definitely incentives, as been mentioned, would be helpful, but also it's, you start the question with the statistics show, and it's just common sense. We know Carver's a bedroom community, and I think we're trying to do things, from meetings that I've attended and seen with the city's growth, to attract, and that's probably really just our next step, is, you know, there is land available, we have things that are Comprehensive Plan. It would be nice to have a little better infrastructure so that it's just a smoother commute for maybe somebody that lives in a different community and is going to come to Carver and work. You know, we need to look at that approach, too. So I think really being just creative and innovative and open to ideas on how to bring those businesses in, because it's more than, in addition to reducing the tax burden for residents, there's just so many other pros to having that.
Ryan?
So I do believe that having more businesses coming to Carver, to have the residents go there, is definitely a good idea. But in the reality that I'm looking at for the 2040 Plan is there's going to be around fifteen thousand people living here, and then there's going to be, maybe about ten percent of that is actually going to be actual workforce if we get, fill up all the slots to come into Carver. So yes, I do believe we do need to bring in more people to that respect, but also for cross-community work as well. So let's say we have the bus transit route. What we can do is, if we can work with the bus companies and stuff like that, to see, hey, what routes, if we can connect to other workplaces or such like that. I think more interconnection is more plausible than having every person in Carver work in Carver.
Okay. Glenn?
Three years ago, I was fortunate enough to sit in with a focus group in the forum that was put together of urban planners and businesses, and it was kind of a think-tank of what's it take to build a city? Does it take businesses to build a city, or does it take residents to build a city? And the consensus basically at the end of the forum was Carver's doing it correctly. You need people for businesses to come, and for businesses, and then for the people, they need the jobs. So right now, we are currently a bedroom community, but the more people that come to Carver, the more businesses that will want to come to Carver. And the more businesses that will want to come to Carver, the more people that will want to come to Carver. It's a fun cycle, and we are pretty, we have six hundred houses right now that are planted, and we're on, we're on par to bring more businesses in because of the people that will be here.
Okay. Courtney?
I, in 2016, I was part of that same workshop that Glenn was referring to as part of my role on the Planning Commission, and those experts told us that the best thing to bring businesses, commercial, industrial, all of those elements that'll help us diversify our tax base to Carver, is to have more rooftops. So potentially, especially when commercial looks at coming to Carver, they take a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of the rooftops around the area. They also look at daytime population. Right now, because we have very little to the west of us, we're struggling with that. All of our growth at this point is benefiting Chaska, and that's why you're seeing some of the development in their area. We will get there, but we're not there quite yet. Again, what Glenn said, the experts said that we're doing the right thing. It's just potentially going to take a little while before we see more business development in Carver. I also think as far as what we will do with the Lakeview Industries proposal that we're looking at up near Fleet Farm, we are contemplating TIF for that, and TIF, at this point in Carver's development, it's a very powerful tool for these kinds of developments. And again, every scenario is different. There's that but-for quotient to make sure that each development reaches that, but it's definitely something to consider to bring business and development to Carver.
Thank you. And Courtney, you'll be first to answer the next question, which is, "Do you feel it is important to stick to the city's Comprehensive Plan, including zoning? Under what circumstances would you advocate for a change or revision to the plan?"
I do think it's important that we stick to the Comprehensive Plan. We're putting a lot of thought into this right now. That said, I've been around long enough, and I have seen as the Planning Commission has recommended tweaks to that Comprehensive Plan and to some zoning changes. I think it's situational, and each unique situation is just that, it's unique, but I think generally speaking, we shouldn't be looking at moving, you know, the industrial area that we've plotted for up by Fleet Farm to a completely different area of town. So I think that we should definitely stick to the Comprehensive Plan in terms of zoning.
Ryan?
So I do believe, can you repeat the question?
Sure. "Do you feel it is important to stick to the city's Comprehensive Plan, including zoning? Under what circumstances would you advocate for a change or revision to the plan?"
So yes, I would stick to the Comprehensive Plan. It's been in the works for the past two years, and it's been thoroughly thought out, and if there would be any changes, it would be minor ones here or there, but it wouldn't change drastically. Let's say we have an industrial district, and then they're going to change it to housing. That just wouldn't be really plausible, but minor changes here and there are definitely plausible. Or if something new technology comes out in the world that's completely changes it, well, then we'll just go with the flow.
Lori?
So I do think we should stick to the Comprehensive Plan, because as Ms. Johnson mentioned, there's been a lot of thought put into it, and not just the last year or two, but every ten years it gets reevaluated. I view the Comprehensive Plan as more like your guiding principles, and I think a city especially, and I think we can come up with a lot of analogies where you need something, just a starting point, you need your guiding principles. But I would, depending on the situation, be open to changes, but just more tweaks, not major changes, but having that mindset of being innovative, if there's something that now is a better idea than it was before, or if there's new data points that support a change in zoning, then that would make sense for that situation possibly to tweak the Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Glenn?
Yes, I believe in working the Comprehensive Plan. Plan your work, work your plan. I look back, or I looked out in the audience, and I see some people that have been on the Council for many years, and they've worked on the 2020 and now the 2030 comp plans. And there hasn't been a lot of deviations from the comp plans, just like Lori and Courtney said, that there's minor things, if it's a residential, it's just a matter of whether it's high-density or to lower densities. Minor tweaks to the comp plan are common, but no major, no major changes to the comp plan, just plan your work, work your plan.
Okay. Kristi?
I think the Comprehensive Plan is an excellent guide. We use it as a guide to put forth our growth and how we move forward. I don't think the world is incredibly black and white. It does move and change depending what is coming in. I do agree that we should not move something like an entire industrial section to right next to, you know, single-family homes, but I think that a little bit of that changeability factor, we have done it before, we have made amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, and certain items have come up that have been deemed important or something that is very relevant and very worthy of that change. Now, being that said, I think our Planning Commission has done an excellent job on all the comp plans that I have worked through, which has been a few of them even as staff. I was staff with the city of Carver for eight years. I think that we are lucky to have residents who are that involved, who can come up with a plan and a vision for what we're going to look like many years from now. But again, I think that we do need to take into consideration at times that there may be something else that comes in that we should consider an amendment if it's deemed necessary. Thank you.
And Kristi, you'll be first to answer the next question. "How would you explain to a resident the large tax increase in Carver planned for next year?"
Ouch, I have to be first on this one. Well, when we're looking at the levy that we have proposed for this year, if you look at this year compared to last year when it comes to the actual tax rate, we have lowered it by two and a half percent. Unfortunately, with the debt service that we have for the new City Hall, that has raised our current levy then to fourteen-point-five percent. We did have a meeting, I believe it was a month ago, we were talking about some of the staff requests and different things in the budget, and I did let everyone know. I said, you know, it's okay to want everything, but we can't have everything. So the staff did come back at the next budget meeting with a lowered percentage. It was, I believe, fifteen-point-six. They came back with a fourteen-point-five. They did make some cuts as requested. I realize that it is a large, a large change. We all pay taxes here. I think we all understand how much that affects our pocketbook when it happens. I do feel that the City Hall was needed, having worked in the City Hall myself. I do know that it was, there was no room for growth. We couldn't add staff, and that was a few years ago now. So I, as we grow into a larger community, it's going to be tough. There's some of these larger expenses that are going to come, and it's going to hurt a little bit, but I really think that this was important for the city, and keeping it downtown was also important, and we did work very hard to get the per-household rate down as far as we could, and I believe we're looking at about a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a year per household. Thank you.
Okay. Glenn?
A lot to Kristi's point, yes. Through a lot of department heads put their, sharpened their pencils, and they did lower the general levy, two and a half percent, but the elephant in the room is the City Hall. And after two years of focus groups and many, many meetings and talking with people, we came up with the building that I believe that most of the citizens of Carver will like. That being said, there are some, there are, it is, it is, it is a big number. It's four-point-nine-five, but I think they'll be very happy with how it turns out, but that is, the elephant in the room is the debt service on the City Hall.
Courtney?
So I like the way that that question was worded, "Explain the budget," because it does, at first glance, fourteen-point-five percent seems high. What is higher is fifteen-point-seven, which is what the levy for the City Hall project alone costs. That's what the debt service, that increase is. Taxes are going up fourteen-point-five percent and not fifteen-point-seven. With that fourteen-point-five, we're getting a full-time, in the budget right now as it stands, and the budget hasn't been finalized, but we are looking at getting a full-time building inspector next year, a new part-time administrative assistant, doing a small bump for our firefighters for their on-call and service pay. There's going to be some capital expenditures for the Public Services Department. So that's what we're getting for the fourteen-point-five percent, which is still less than the five-point-seven percent. That discrepancy between those two numbers are because of market growth and the percent increase. So that's where Carver's growth is really helping lower, help with the tax impact. The other thing I think is worthy, in my final seconds here to mention, is about franchise fees. Carver does not charge franchise fees like our neighbors in Chaska get, so you're not paying extra on your cable, electric, and gas bills. That's another, that's a pass-through charge that those folks see.
Lori?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. "How would you explain to a resident the large tax increase in Carver planned for next year?"
Yeah, if I had to explain to a resident the large increase for our tax, is we're also going to start offering more services, and it's, it was due, it was coming. I wasn't involved with the budget, and that is the one area where I would need to learn more things, too, and I would look forward to that. But for me, I, when I was learning about it, I wasn't surprised. We saw it coming, but I really have faith in that we're going to have more services. I know there's a need for more building inspector hours, so it's been kind of a long time coming, it's just all happening at once. So I really hope things have worked the best in that this, that we won't see a significant jump ever again, that if anything, go down, or there may be times where there's incremental, but nothing this significant.
Ryan?
So as more businesses and more companies come in, as well as needed for more infrastructure to support operations that they have, trucks and stuff like that, to build more roads, to facilitate, let's say if we wanted to park or something like that, all that other good stuff, as we place more, the taxes to have all of that built and all of that maintained is, of course, going to go up. So as we grow as a community, so is how much we need to put into it. So if you want to think of it like, hey, look, why is our taxes going up? Just think of it as we're putting it into better the community and to just make life much better.
Okay. And Ryan, you'll go first for the next question, which is, "How would you assess the current relationship with Chaska regarding parks and recreation services? What changes would you make?"
So to tell the truth, I don't know much about Chaska and their parking recreational facilities, but I do know that they just put in a while ago their, I forgot what that was called.
Curling.
Curling, yes. Their curling center. So apparently, and that's a big hit, and the rocks they use, I do believe, come from Ireland, and that's the only place they can get, and they're extremely expensive. So what they're doing is apparently quite well, and if we follow their example and put our little tweaks into it, I do believe that we would prosper. That's all I have.
Okay. Glenn?
Chaska, the big brother to the east. We have a great relationship with Chaska, and as far as our Parks and Rec Services contract, that is up at the end of this year, and the negotiations that have come through, we are not going to be, they will not raise it, they will offer the same value that we are currently getting. So you can have resident rates at the curling center, the town course, the community center, and it's, I think it's a go. The negotiations are pretty much just going to be a matter of putting pen to ink. So that's, that's as far as the relationship with Chaska, it's always a good one.
Okay. Kristi?
Could you repeat the question one more time?
"How would you assess the current relationship with Chaska regarding parks and recreation services? What changes would you make?"
So currently, we're paying the city of Chaska over fifty thousand dollars per year to give us resident rates at their community center and their other outlets, as Glenn had said. I feel that I can appreciate those residents in Carver who can take advantage of that and enjoy those perks. I think that's wonderful. However, all of that money is still going to the city of Chaska. I think we have opportunities to do something again. I think we have opportunities to do something again here with parks and recreation. I also think that if we are going to maintain this agreement with Chaska, we need to have some serious discussions about what they are offering. I know they had some very successful programs up at the school. However, when it comes to, for example, the concerts down here at the park, not only were they a flop, to be very honest, but the city of Carver actually pays for those bands. That does not come out of the fifty-some thousand dollars that we pay Chaska every year. I think that they need to do a better job of advertising. I don't think that maybe the things they're offering are bad. I think that if they're going to offer things here and they are going to dedicate time, they need to really focus on bringing us quality programs, timely programs, having them advertised, so that people know what is happening here more than just once a quarter when it comes out in their Park and Rec program book. I think we have a lot that we need to request from them and that we need to expect from them if we're going to keep this agreement going as is. Again, I appreciate the fact that, that my time's up.
Courtney?
I think that our relationship with Chaska is terrific. I think as it relates to the Chaska Department of Parks and Rec, it is good as well. You know, as a small town, we aren't to the point where we need a curling center or a community center. So to be able to have an agreement with Chaska where our folks are able to use those amenities as if they're their own and paying the same resident rates is terrific. I know that Chaska has made some really great improvements, not only to the physical location of the community center, but they've also done some things with their memberships that have been really great improvements this year. I think we're still working out to figure out what that sweet spot is for programming here in Carver. We are really hurt by not having a venue like city hall where we can host some of our programming. We have Carver, we have a smaller venue, but it hurts us not to have that. Kristy is right, we need to reevaluate the summer concerts and take a look into that to see how we can engage more folks and get them down, or see if that's something that we need to continue. But I think that the relationship with the folks at Chaska Park and Rec is a really good one and allows for a nice amenity for our folks.
Okay. Lori?
Yep. Regarding the relationship with the Chaska Park and Rec and the benefits that we can utilize as residents at their community center and different classes and things they offer, is important to always reassess the relationship, because for here, it's a contractual relationship, and that's a great opportunity to look at what are the expectations? Are they executing on deliverables? And then also, I would like to see getting more community input on, is this actually good value for us? And then decide from there if maybe some things in the contract need to be rewritten.
Okay. Thank you. And then Lori, you'll be asked, this is a follow-up question to the same topic. Given the significant reduction in recreational programming within Carver city limits in recent years, what are your thoughts about bringing recreation services back to the city of Carver?
I don't completely agree that there's been a significant reduction in, can I actually have you just say the question again?
Sure. Given the significant reduction in recreational programming within Carver city limits in recent years, what are your thoughts about bringing recreation services back to the city of Carver?
Right. So I don't think there's been a significant reduction. Yes, there's fewer things that we can do under our own roof without the city hall, but once that is built and functioning, I think we'll see an increase. I've seen more community events and things that I've been attending with my family, just now having a school here. So I think there's other opportunities in addition to just programs that you see in a pamphlet for what you could sign up for. So I really, I don't see it as too much of a reduction, and I see it really growing once our city hall is finished.
Okay. Kristy?
Can you repeat it again, please?
Sure. Given the significant reduction in recreational programming within Carver city limits in recent years, what are your thoughts about bringing recreation services back to the city of Carver?
Well, as the former Parks and Recreation Supervisor for the city of Carver, I think that it is important to have a really great, diverse offerings for the city. I think that when you have somebody who is here on staff, that it is, they're known, they're seeing their faces out there, it's better promoted. Now, not having a city hall or programming space in the last couple of years, I don't think that there would have been that necessary need for that type of, of position or person to do that. I think once a city hall comes along and we have more programming space, there may be an opportunity for something along that line. I don't know what that looks like at this point. I have seen and do feel that there is some reduction in the community offerings that we have had. However, I have seen some other groups now pick up, I guess, that slack. You'll see the Carver Lions doing more, Funky Minds is doing more. So I think there is definitely that community push and that community spirit that wants those types of things to happen here in our hometown with our own friends and our own neighbors. And so looking into the future, once the new city hall is up, that might be something that the city council should be taking a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Okay. So more recreation in the city of Carver, I do believe, would be very beneficial. But I also think it to have, instead of just groups like Funky Minds and the Lions Club, we can also have the members of the community come up with an idea saying, hey, look, I think this would be a perfect idea for, let's say, Earth Day. You have, get in contact with the schools and the Carver Elementary and say, hey, look, is there any space available that we could do this? And then you can have like a giant function and have the community set it up. It might not, and then it could also pass through city council and stuff like that to, let's say, we have more backing and stuff like that, money-wise. But I think that it also could do in someone's, let's say, backyard, if it's big enough, have, hey, look at all these other different events that the community sets up instead of just, it has to be paid for by someone else. Sorry. That's all.
Thank you. Glenn?
When we had a Parks and Rec department, we had twenty-five to thirty programs that we offered the city, the people of Carver. With the contract with the city of Chaska, we have over three hundred programs and opportunities for the citizens to partake in. With the, with the city hall being imploded and being basically useless for the last two and a half years, yes, it has been a venue issue. I believe that in the negotiations with Chaska coming up, they will take into consideration that we will have a new community building, that we will have access, that the programming will have access to and will be used a lot more. Yes, it was nice having basketball up in the, up in the school, but that was pretty much the limit of it. We have, like I said, over three hundred programs right now. I don't look at it as it's a reduction in activities that the people can partake in. I look at it where it was an expansion, an immense expansion at half the cost.
Courtney?
So I too disagree that there's been a significant reduction in rec services, and I don't think that now is the time to bring back rec services within the city's fold. I think that, you know, I'll agree that, as I mentioned in my last answer, without having the venue that city hall offers, we are at a little bit of a disadvantage. But I think that the Chaska Parks and Rec department has done a really good job of getting creative and bringing some unique and innovative programming to the spaces that we have, both indoors and outdoors. You know, sitting in this room tonight are two individuals who I have run with at the Chaska Community Center. You know, we talked earlier about how we're a bedroom community. We're driving right past the Chaska Community Centers. We're on our way in and out from work, I would imagine, the majority of us who commute to jobs in the Twin Cities. So I think of the Chaska Community Center as our community center. It's not uncommon to see your friends and neighbors from Carver there and participating in those programs. So I think that the relationship that we have right now is good and appropriate.
Thank you. We have time for one last question, and Glenn, you'll be asked this question first. How would you suggest the mayor and council communicate community issues to residents? For example, safety concerns or threats, traffic or construction issues, water quality or other important city actions?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. How would you suggest the mayor and council communicate community issues to residents? For example, safety concerns or threats, traffic or construction issues, water quality or other important city actions?
Currently, we do a lot with social media, email, and mailing lists of people that we have on file. Communicating with, through the engineers for the construction projects, that's, leaves a little bit to be desired, but the engineers are supposed to be making sure that all people that will be affected by construction traffic should be notified. The water issues, the, we on the city hear about a lot, we hear more about the issues of the water than actual people bring in samples and want to get to the bottom of If anybody out there has water issues, contact Brian Schoke, he will drop off sample bottles. Get the samples to us so we can get to the root of the problem, if there wa, if there is one. As far as the safety is with the sheriff's office and stuff, they do a great job in communicating through Brent, our city administrator, and our city manager, and...
Okay. Courtney?
I appreciate the question. One of the things that I ran on when I ran for city council two years ago was communications. I think right now, the way that the city communicates these kinds of issues is through the city's Facebook page, email, there's monthly newsletter. I know that the sheriff's department has a service called Nixle that you can sign up for to get alerts on your phone if there's anything going on that is worthy of public alert. Chaska uses them as well. I also have a city Facebook page, which I have used to help alert residents. What I don't believe, and I think Facebook is a little bit of a slippery slope, is I think it's really important to go through the right channels. If residents have concerns or issues, they can call city hall, and that's the best way to deal with issues. We've got really great staff, some of the nicest men and women you will ever meet. And if you have issues and concerns, they would love to help you with that. What is an issue is when folks post on the Carver Life Facebook page, which is not moderated or followed by anyone from the city in an official capacity. I think probably all of us sitting up here listen in and participate occasionally, if not more frequently, but I think the correct channel is making sure that the appropriate folks at the city are aware of your concerns or issues. I mean, they'll even help answer your questions if you see those sirens in your neighborhood and wondering where they're headed.
Ryan?
So for the social media part, I know most of us probably have a Facebook, and I know the city of Carver has a Facebook page stating, hey, look, this is what's happening, this is what's going on. But if people want more interaction and stuff like that, I know that, how do I say this, for different apps that are out there for phones and such, I know we all have a phone as well. You could just, we could probably create an app for just the city of Carver itself, and if you wanted to download it, you could do that, and then submit feed, sort of like feedback, saying, hey, look, this is the problem, this is where I found it, this is how I think it should be solved, sort of in that format. Because with every question, there should also be a way how to fix it. But other than that, all we can really do is get questions either from Facebook or from the actual city of Carver website that we do have, which has a whole bunch of information on it.
Thank you. Kristy?
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Sure. How would you suggest the mayor and council communicate community issues to residents? For example, safety concerns or threats, traffic or construction issues, water quality or other important city actions?
I think we do a nice job of getting information out to the city, especially in the beginning processes when we're talking about traffic or construction. I think we have great resident meetings, we get people out there talking about what's coming up and what they can expect. I think maybe we can do a little bit better of a job when something changes during the process to maybe contact or do a mailer to the homes that are going to be affected. Not to say that we never do, but I think sometimes even with, even just recently with the heavy rains that we had, I know one of our construction projects, they had switched routes for hauling into it because of the saturated ground, and it was not expected by, not expected by the residents in the area. So I think that there's always room for improvement. I think we try our hardest, maybe a little more real-time information on the website and on Facebook. But again, I would, I would absolutely suggest that if you have a question, please contact city hall, call them right away. They're going to be more than happy to help you out and answer whatever they can for you, rather than waiting and wondering and maybe not getting the correct information or the information as timely as you can, please call city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
I would just suggest that they continue to do what they're doing. I think this communications have been handled very well. I've seen a huge improvement, really in the last six years. So I think just to continue what they're doing, I would suggest that they look at what our school district does for when it comes to very time-sensitive messages. I feel like the school's district's really got it figured out. They have email options, you can opt-in, opt-out, as well as recorded phone calls that can be sent to phone numbers. Those would be my suggestions.
Thank you. Candidates will now have one and a half minutes for their closing statements to summarize their qualifications and positions. We will again go in alphabetical order. Courtney Johnson.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County for holding tonight's candidate forum and for all of the work which went into this event. Thank you to the city of Carver for hosting, live streaming, and videotaping the forum. And finally, thank you to all of you, whether you're here in person or if you're watching this online, for participating in the democratic process and doing your homework on all of us as candidates. The mayor we choose on November sixth will have just one vote on city council, but as our, as our community continues to grow, the importance of having a mayor who will serve as Carver's chief ambassador and proverbial bridge builder will become even more important. I'm running for mayor because I have the experience, the dedication, and I know I'm the best person to lead Carver through the next four years. I'm committed to our community and dedicated to its progress. So that's my spiel. Now I want to hear from you. I'd love to hear from the community. If you want to reach out and learn more about me, I have a website, which is www.courtney4mayor.com. My email is courtney4, the number four, mayor@gmail.com. My Facebook page is Courtney for Mayor, again, the number four. You see a pattern here. Or you can call and text me. My cell phone number is six one two, seven oh two, seven seven oh three. Finally, I'd like everyone who's available to please join me tomorrow for my coffee with the candidate. It's going to be tomorrow morning from six thirty to nine thirty at A Cup of Carver.
Thank you. Kristy?
Well, I would also like to say thank you for everyone who has come out tonight and for everyone who will be watching or taking a look at this later. I appreciate that you've taken the time out of your busy schedules to hear everything that all the candidates have had to say. Again, with my campaign slogan, because it's about we, I really do believe that. I've enjoyed working alongside each other as friends and neighbors. I've learned as people, we don't often listen well. We listen to be right or to debunk or to debate. or to debate, but we don't often listen to hear. And I want the residents of Carver to know that I hear you, and I've heard you, and I am listening to everything that comes in and everything that is important in your life. A few things that we can work on together for the, for the future is maintaining and valuing our vital historic downtown. Growth in ecotourism, we have a great opportunity with capitalizing on our natural resources here in town. Taxes, of course, property taxes and water rates are always at the forefront of everything. We work with sensible residential and commercial growth and infrastructure that can meet our needs. We have tough challenge, excuse me, we have tough challenges ahead, and I'm ready, I'm ready for those, and I'm ready for us to work together. So, if you would please, in November, vote mock for mayor. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me on Facebook or, she slashed the sign at me, on Facebook or at my Yahoo account. Thank you.
Glenn?
I'd just like to thank the League again for putting on a great venue for us candidates to come and give our views and opinions on what is coming to Carver and how we would lead Carver in the next four years. My experience, I've been on the council for the past eight years. I've learned a lot, there's a lot of growing that you need to learn when you're new on the council, as you two have found out. And it's exciting times for Carver. We have a lot of residential that's coming. We are going to have to address the, the infrastructure as far as the water, the water systems, and absolutely Jonathan Carver Parkway. We do have that corridor study coming in soon, and there will be four lanes on it, just don't know, not sure when. I'm running again because I have leadership and experience, and if there's anybody that has any questions as to what I've done in the past, just ask these two candidates or anybody else. I'll tell you exactly where I stand, and vote for Glenn Henry in November on the 6th.
Thank you. Lori?
Yes, thanks, Ms. Casper, and the team that's with her today from League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity. I believe I have the right experience, the leadership skills, the passion to serve in the role and responsibility of city of Carver council member. I think of myself as very approachable, so that I would want to be asked questions, and I'm also somebody in a meeting that's not afraid to ask the tough questions and talk through scenarios and think of different solutions, to really think through some of the decisions that are going to be put in front of the council the next four years. So, I'm looking for support, and just encourage everyone to be involved with the voting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Well, I'd like to thank everyone that came out here to participate in all of the nice events that were set up. Thank you very much. I'd just like to say that I am definitely new in policymaking processes. I have been behind the actual motions of what was put in place for certain policies. As a military goes, pretty much, hey, look, do this, okay, fantastic. But now, I'm definitely interested in how everything goes behind that. And I hopefully will get the opportunity to do so and to support this community and hopefully make it better.
Thank you. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate by the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County. And now for our closing, here is the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County President, Maria Muller. Maria?
The League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County would like to thank you, you all for coming tonight and our online audience for viewing. We would especially like to thank our candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and for being willing to serve in our communities. The League researches issues important to our members and to the health of our communities. If you're interested in finding out more about what we do and how you can make, also make a difference, please pick up a membership brochure at the registration table or visit us at l w v m n dot org. Membership is open to all people ages 16 and older. You can find more information about candidates and about voting at L, I'm sorry, at m n votes dot org and l w v m n dot org. This forum has been recorded and will be available on our Facebook page, the city of Carver website, and on the LWV MN website. Again, thank you for coming, and remember to vote on November 6th.